Roll call of the city council meeting of Wednesday, May 7th, 2025 at 9:00 a.m. Members Witherspoon, Brzezinski, Flores, Nelson, Schaff, Titus, Troop.
Thank you. We stand for the pledge allegiance of the flag and a moment of silence.
Mr. President?
Yes.
If I could, I would like to say a moment for Sister Mary Arnold Tan, a Sister of St. Joseph in her 90s who passed away. She was very active in our Erie community as an educator, an administrator, and mover and shaker for the Sisters of St. Joseph in education. Thank you.
Mr. President, also Attorney Jeff Conley passed away earlier in April, so condolences to Judge Conley, Judge Marucci, errant too. Jeff was one heck of a good friend and we did a lot of things that had a lot of fun doing. We're going to miss him.
Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Approval of the minutes of April 16th, city council meeting and bills for payment on May 9th and 16th. Members Brzezinski, Flores, Nelson, Schaff, Titus, Troop, Witherspoon. Okay, Council President, I don't think we have a presentation today. Is there anybody here for repository sale? Okay, you can come up to the front, state the property that you're talking about, and there's questions on the podium if you could answer those questions for council.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Okay, the property in concern that we're looking to purchase is on Buffalo Road and the partial ID is 18-051-030020800. The second one is also on Buffalo Road and the ID number for that one is 18051-051-030020900. The property does not have a structure on it and the plans for us for that property, for the John F. Kennedy Center, is to somewhere in the future, near future, to build on it. The buildings that we formerly have, our programs and everything running out of, we're running out of space. We need more classrooms. We have a medical business queue. Meds is in the building. We were looking at eventually like trying to build and have more space for them to extend their services that they provide also. So this is why we want to try to buy those two pieces that will give us quite a bit of building space to extend our programs. We can't even right now, there's no space to even add new programs to what we do because we're limited. We just, we just need more space. What condition is the property in? Well, it's just very overgrown with trees and things of that nature, trash. It's, it probably costs us a little bit more than what we're paying, would pay for the property to get it all cleared up and those, that type of things as far as what, what's on it. Do, do you live near the property? No. Well, our agency is right across the street. How will you provide for the maintenance of the property? We will do everything that we do for the property that we have on that side of the street. It's, it will be an extension of what we do when it comes to keeping it mowed and also snowplowed. We have not had any code violations in the past three years.
Any questions from council?
The properties that you have on Buffalo Road, are they side by side then?
The ones that we own?
The ones that you want?
Yes.
Okay. And you said they're across the street, so please make sure, I know, and I know you will, but Buffalo Road is so busy. I have been a teacher at St. James for 40-plus years, so just make sure that there's like a crossing person whenever you're doing children and stuff. That's just a really huge concern, so I don't know.
We know because we have to make sure staff is with students when they take them across the street to do any type of activity on the property that's across the street from us. So we realize even with our seniors coming in, it's, it's tough to get them, you know, across Buffalo Road. Yes.
That's all I have.
That's it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We will not vote on that today. You will be contacted by city clerk and we'll vote on it at our next meeting. Are there any other citizens to be heard?
Hello? Want me to go?
Are you repository sale?
Yeah.
Okay, what is the address of the property and when you're done, could you stop in the clerk's office and give them a copy of your license?
Okay. The address is 2406 Downing Ave. Did you want the number for it?
No.
It is vacant. There's nothing on the property as of right now. My plan is to build a home for the next few years. The property is clean. It's maintained as of right now. I do have my own equipment to keep up with the property and I do not have any code violations in the past three years. And I do live near, I live on Parade, so it's not too far.
Okay, any questions from council? Hearing none. Again, we will not vote on this today. We've gathered information and you will be contacted and we will vote on it at our next meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any other repositories? Hearing none. Now we will have citizens to be heard. There will be five minutes given to you. Please identify your name and municipality.
Good morning, council members. My name is Katie Kratz and I proudly serve as the executive director of the Multicultural Community Resource Center here in Erie County, specifically the city of Erie. Among being a social service provider, we are also one of the three federally designated refugee resettlement agencies here in the city of Erie. For over 50 years, we provided essential services to Erie's refugee, immigrant, Latino, and New American communities. I plan to speak today regarding the proposed reallocation of nearly $277,000 to Paramount Pursuits, which is on today's agenda. I was told that it was going to be removed, but it appears to be still on. But the issue still demands attention because it reflects a larger concern, decisions being made without transparency, communication, or inclusion of those already doing the work. Every month, we meet with the mayor and his team with the New American Council where we regularly offer updates and engage in open dialogue to improve experiences for New Americans with the ultimate goal of getting them to stay here in Erie. At no point was MCRC, USCRI, or Catholic Charities invited to discuss this proposal. No concerns were brought to us that weren't, weren't addressed and no mention of an expanded scope of services was raised at these meetings. In fact, we were informed that Paramount Pursuits' role was to support new, new refugee and New American entrepreneurs. That is their area of expertise and we welcome that and we fully support the work that they have done to help our budding refugee and New American entrepreneurs. But quietly expanding the scope into direct refugee services without consulting the three local agencies who've been doing the work for decades, that is not collaboration, that is true exclusion. Yes, the refugee system has been impacted by federal funding freezes. That's why our three agencies came together in unity and spent countless hours developing a white paper outlining the policy changes, the impact on Erie's community, and the immediate short-term, long-term needs of our refugee community. That has propelled support of the Erie Community Foundation along with the community, other community organizational stakeholders who helped launch the Rapid Response Fund that has been built on the expectation of cooperation and local investment. But let me be clear, MCRC is fully operational despite federal funding freezes. We've retained nearly all of our staff and continue to deliver trauma-informed culturally competent services, including ESL classes, skill development, job training, and social services for our refugees. We are also leading efforts to address safe and affordable housing solutions and I proudly serve on the government, government, excuse me, Governor's statewide Affordable Housing Advisory Committee to represent Erie's refugee voice at the state level. I wanted to keep this brief, but those who know me know me better. But all kidding aside, I do want you to listen very closely to what I have to say next. I would be remiss if I didn't acknowledge my incredible dedicated team of almost 80 staff members, some of which are in this room. We have tenured staff with over 40 years of experience and provide crucial immigration services. ESL instructors with more, with more than 20 years of experience, senior case managers with over two decades of service who mentor and guide all of our case managers every day. We have a diversity trainer who's also a former refugee with over 15 years of experience educating organizations across the region about our community of clients. 85% of our staff are former refugees themselves, who know the journey of our clients because they've worked alongside them and walked the paths themselves. These are the people who go into homes, teach families how to navigate the systems in the United States. They are also the familiar faces in schools with our children so that they can be seen and felt, feel safe. They're ones who take late night phone calls to meet expectant mothers in the hospital to help deliver babies because they're here by themselves. They are in our clients' worst moments, but they're also in our clients' best moments. And that's how you build trust. That's how you build community and that's how you get people to stay. I don't stand here to cause division and disruption. I stand here as an advocate for our clients, for our staff.
Excuse me, your time is up.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good morning. My name is Patty Williams. I live in the city of Erie, near the zoo, and I would like to applaud the work of MCRC. I'm sorry. Oh, okay. All right. I'm here to talk about the zoo. It's a wonderful, wonderful regional asset that we have. It's become a part of my life. I am a volunteer at the zoo, a new volunteer, and I'm also a volunteer there with Master Gardeners. These are my words, not reflective of either organization. We just need to save the zoo. I don't know all of the intricacies of it. You all are in place to know that, but we do need to save it. It's wonderful. I didn't grow up in Erie, but when I moved to Erie, I've had a zoo membership every year and it's just a part of it to be able to hear the animals and, I'm sorry, I'm not sure why I'm so emotional, I'm sorry, but to hear the animals and to see the families that go to the zoo. One morning I sat outside waiting to go in and there were people there with their adult special needs children. They're decorated in their costumes and that just really touched me that morning. So I don't know what we need to do, but we need to do it. So I encourage people to buy a zoo membership. It's one of the best deals in town. Go and see Glow Wild. It's through June 15th, Thursday through Sunday nights, 6:00 to 10:00. It's awesome. People have come out of there crying because it's so, so spectacular. And I'd really like to see our community support that, but also long-range our zoo. And then the second issue that I have, sorry, is I do hope that we can have a report on the issue that we heard about at the April 16th meeting about the police and the border patrol. I'd really like to know what happened to that young person. So, thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Nathaniel Brega, Erie, Pennsylvania, city resident. Mine's very, my topic's very simple. Between Front Street on State Street to Sixth Street, they're doing the construction there, and they're going seven inches deep for the sidewalks. I feel that it's a waste of taxpayers' money if they don't just go ahead and put the concrete road down there as well because they're going to be spending all summer working on the sidewalks like they did last year, maybe, I don't know. And I feel that there should be concrete roads there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, my friends. My name is Dave French. Live in downtown Erie. Graduated from Cathedral Prep 55 years ago, rural ramblers. Love the Jacka Chuck, but I really have no complaints, but I have to give an ad lib to the Country Fair Organization for putting the fine facility near Perry Square. It has totally exceeded my expectations. They're having an open house this afternoon and it's a real plus for downtown Erie. I love living in downtown Erie. Sometimes I'm critical, but my criticism is wearing off, so we all must be doing something right. So I'll pass it back on the people that are the movers and the shakers and we just keep it up. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Good morning. My name's Brandon Penn. I'm a resident of the city of Erie. I am here in my capacity as the president of the Apartment Association to talk about the tenant bill of rights. We, as the association, do appreciate the council amending the bill of rights to be clear that it's just that page document rather than the entire ordinance that needs to go with the lease. There are a couple of other amendments we hope that you guys will implement in there. The first is in regards to return security deposits and it says application fee. We feel that that gives the wrong impression because what they're talking about in the application fee is actually a deposit to hold the property, which is returned to the tenant if they do not get the property. An application fee is actually the fee we charge that covers the background check, which costs money. So we would like to see that changed to either deposit to hold or hold deposit to make that a little bit more clear. The other thing we would like to see added in there is in regards to the rent withholding. I understand that we can't put the entire legal process in the summary as this is supposed to be basic, you know, summary of tenant rights, but we would like to see some verbiage added that please speak with an attorney on the legal proceeding or that there is a legal process to withholding rent. It's not just, oh, I have a leaky faucet, now I don't have to pay rent. You know, there's a certain process that has to be followed and I've already had tenants abusing that for that specific reason. Oh, my faucet's leaking or, oh, there's a piece of siding coming down. I don't have to pay you rent. It's like, no, you need to give notification. There's a certain amount of time that can be done. If it's not done, then rent goes into a escrow account because it is due to the landlord once the repair is fixed. Obviously, I understand that's a little much to put in there, but if we could at least put that there is a legal process, we would appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Joe Sell. I'm actually from Erie County, Harper Creek. I'm also landlord on the Apartment Association. I was asked to talk a little bit about what we go through. Hear that there's a shortage in housing for the city of Erie. Now, a few years back, you guys had passed the, the codes for the inspections for, for the apartments. Now, we have a lot of apartments in the city of Erie that aren't being rented. Maybe the staircase is an inch or two inches too short that any of us could walk right through. They're saying that that's a problem for the firefighters. I've talked to several of them and they just kind of laughed. They said that the railings are more of an issue than a clearance of one or two inches on a staircase. When we're buying properties, we ask for the records as far as has the property been inspected by the city of Erie? We won't buy them if they haven't been. Then we buy them and BIU comes in and one particular property we have, it's eight units, there's drip pans underneath all the, there was no drip pans underneath all the hot water tanks. So they came in and they said, well, you have to do this. So we didn't argue, we did it, $1,000 a unit. That gets passed on. I mean, it, one way or another, that gets passed on. We always put our tenants first. If there's a heat call, then the tenants get taken care of first before we do. Some of the trees in the city of Erie, we've called and complained. I mean, they're dead. We've had people trim them. They said, you know, the company is saying these trees are dead. Nobody will take care of them. We have to get our attorneys involved. And once we get the attorneys involved, then all of a sudden they get cut down. I've had instances where neighbors at my, like I'm at one of my properties doing maintenance and a neighbor's partying on the roof, drinking beer, throwing cans, et cetera. I called the police department. Are you a resident? Do you live there? No, not our problem. Have your tenants call. That's not right. We're not getting, we're not getting backed up by the police department. Government housing in the area, I mean, they should be held to the same standards that we are. I'll be the first one to call code enforcement and say that there's, you know, housing taken care of by the government. They're not, you know, abandoned cars, trash, tires. I mean, that affects my tenants. I just believe that leading by example is the way to go and that's, I think we all need to come together. I wish that they would have came to us, the Apartment Association, and talked to us about this before they passed these rules. I mean, not one person has ever come to one of our, our meetings to see how we do things. We have an awards program that we fix blighted properties. We don't get any coverage on that. We don't get any coverage. We've asked the mayor, we've asked city council if they've come in and we've had trainings, no interest. We're trying to build better landlords. And this doesn't just affect us, it also affects the homeowners. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Brandi Cubitt. I actually am a resident of Mill Creek Township, but I own properties in Erie. I'm part of the Northwest Apartment Association. And I don't own many. I own a couple of properties. I, I think one, I'm here to talk about the tenant bill of rights and just a little bit about the landlord-tenant relationship. I think at the core of the problem is a lack of education. Like, so we, there's almost like a headbutting type system because a lot of tenants feel that landlords are just out here getting rich and making all kinds of money when the profit per month per a property might be like $50 to $100. And good landlords sink that money back into that property to assure that there's safety there. Like, I'm a single mom of two, of two girls. I'm a retired Army veteran. Like, safety is at the forefront of my concern for my tenants. But the problem comes in when our tenant bill of rights says something like along the lines of returning an application fee. Well, as Brandon Penn had mentioned, that application fee is used to do a background check to make sure that we are putting the safest people in with our other tenants, especially in duplex situations, and the safest people in our neighborhoods. So with that in mind, like we, I would like to see that changed as well as Brandon Penn had mentioned. It would also be really nice to see some kind of education program created, whether it runs through the library or, you know, somebody from the Northwest Apartment Association can come in to even like the high schools because I have a sister who's 18 years old about to graduate from Erie High and she wants to rent her first apartment and she's coming to me and looking to me like, hey, what do I need to look for? What do I need to know? I'm not going to sit here and deny that there are, there aren't slum lords in Erie, right? We all know it. We've all seen it. But I think that the, the majority of us want what's best for our tenants. We want to have good properties. It doesn't behoove us to have dilapidated buildings. It's not good for our community. It's not good for our tenants and it's not good for us in the end to have those dilapidated buildings. It's not good for the future of, of us or the community. But like I said, you know, some kind of education where we either go into the high school and talk to these kids or we set something up through the library, maybe an education program that can run for those that receive some kind of assistance all the way down to like lie heap or even a food stamps. I think, you know, having been somebody who had to use WIC and food stamps, there's plenty of education there about, centered around like nutrition. So why don't we have that centered around care of your own property and, you know, what your rights actually are so it can be fully explained to the tenants so that they understand the processes, the procedures, and what they actually are rightfully entitled to as tenants in the buildings, right? Because it's not about trying to suppress their rights or anything like that. It's, it's actually about empowering them and educating them and, and helping them become better tenants and so that we can in turn be better landlords towards them and we can work cohesively together. That's all I have. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much.
Hello. Jeff Johnson, Lower East Side, Erie. And the main concern today is the failure of this large item pickup program. Lower East Side, Erie looks like a third-world country and that's no joke because I've lived in third-world countries. But, you know, I've been in Lower East Side for over 40, about 62 years and it's just getting worse and worse. And I know they're having this big code enforcement surge or whatever you want to call it, but it's not going to work. Something's just got to be done that, you know, I could, I drove through my neighborhood, there was 20 large items that, garbage. So get three items. They got 15 items out. They got garbage, construction materials everywhere. Anywhere, my neighborhood is from Gilson, East Avenue, 10th Street to the lake. It's disgrace. Most of it, I don't know, because homeownership is lacking and so it's a lot of, a lot of non-owner occupied properties, landlords vacant. And so I used to be able to report. I used to work with Maz a lot. He's good, but just pushes the paper to the next one. Had to Had Steve got promoted, so now my guy is Mr. Rowan. Talked to him in the beginning, and he's just getting his feet wet, so he really didn't have any answers or what have you. So, I gave him the winner to get his feet wet, so I'll be hopefully working with him to get some of these things done. Another big issue is, is the authorities owning property, especially that Erie County Redevelopment Authority, that lot next to the old Hammond Mill Credit Union on Eastlake Road. It's a mess, garbage all through it, knee-high grass. So, you call, and Tina will not even answer my emails anymore, because I just asked her questions. I read their minutes, they're trying to lease the property, but it always backs out. I don't know if it's an environmental problem there or what, but everybody backs out of trying to lease that property or whatever. But, and in the winter, kids are walking in the street because they don't take care of their sidewalks, but no one seems to care. I reported it, nothing. I reported it to the engineers, I guess they take care of the snow, Julie, nothing done. So, it seems just like the Lower East Side of Erie is becoming a shithole, and you need to do something about it. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir.
Elizabeth Stanton, I'm a member of the Erie County United. I'm here in support of the Tenant Bill of Rights. Living in dilapidated housing is demoralizing, causing tenants to lose confidence and hope. The Tenant's Bill of Rights is a tool to hold delinquent property owners in Erie City accountable for the crime of robbing tenants of the pursuit of happiness. By voting in this ordinance, this council is lifting up the morale of girls and boys, women and men all over the city. Let's fight the brightness damage, of damaged properties, and usher in a new stage of encouragement and excited, excitement for the brightness that well-maintained, attractive homes and yards will bring, lifting the morale of communities all over our city of Erie. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Ruko Jancy, and I reside in Lawrence Park. Again, my name is Ruka Jancy, and it is my privilege to serve as the president and CEO of the Erie Zoo. I stand before you this morning on behalf of the Erie Zoo, our staff, our animals, and the thousands of families who visit us every year. Before I start, I would like to recognize the individuals with us today who are here in support of the zoo. By a show of hands, can you please raise your hand if you are here specifically to support the zoo today? Thank you all for being here. This morning, I am here not just to speak on behalf of the zoo, but to also speak on behalf of an organization that has quietly, faithfully, and passionately stewarded this institution for decades, the Erie Zoological Society. As many of you know, the Erie Zoological Society has been entrusted with the care and operation of the zoo for over sixty years. That trust, granted by the city of Erie and reinforced by the community, has been an honor and a responsibility that we have carried with deep pride. Through economic downturns, changing public expectations, evolving animal welfare standards, and the challenges that come with aging infrastructure, we have stood committed. Generations of our staff, board members, volunteers, and donors have poured their hearts into this place, not just as an attraction, but as a symbol of pride for Erie. It has been one of the greatest honors of our organization's existence to help build and sustain something that means so much to so many. And because we love the zoo, and because we understand what's required to ensure it continues for generations to come, we are here this morning to support a new chapter in its stewardship. We believe the transitioning of ownership of the zoo from the city of Erie to Erie Events is the best path forward for us to sustain long-term stability, growth, and relevance in our community. This transition is about building on a foundation we've worked so hard to protect, and humbly recognizing that a new path forward, a partnership with an organization equipped with broader resources and operational capacity, can help us go further. Erie Events is a proven manager of public assets, including the Warner Theater, UPMC Park, the Bayfront Convention Center, and others. They bring financial oversight, access to funding streams we cannot reach on our own, and a proven track record of revitalizing beloved community landmarks. What we are proposing is a partnership. The values that have guided the Erie Zoological Society for decades, education, conservation, community, and care, will remain at the core. The people who know and love this zoo will continue to play essential roles, but we believe it's time to reinforce those values with stronger infrastructure, deeper investment, and long-term strategic support. We've operated the zoo on a shoestring budget for decades, and we have improved the zoo as far as we can with our current structure. We've reevaluated, we've regrouped, reprioritized, and we've refocused. Now, we want to see it grow and thrive and evolve into the 21st century facility that our region can continue to be proud of. We believe that Erie Events can make that happen. To the city of Erie, thank you for the trust you've placed in the Zoological Society over these many years. We have done our absolute best to honor that trust. And now, in the same spirit of responsibility and forward-thinking, we ask that you support this transition, not as an end, but as a continuation of the mission we've always held close, to inspire, to educate, and to connect our community with the natural world. Thank you for your time, your service, your stewardship of this important decision, and your commitment to Erie's future. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Ron Erwin. I reside in Crawford County, but I have rental properties in the city of Meadville, and I am also a member of the Apartment Association. So, by a show of hands also, can we see how many landlords are in the group? I think my daughter, she couldn't be here, but I think she said it best when she asked, when do we get, as landlords, a bill of rights? I'm looking down through this and, you know, the ability, the electrical system that meets safety requirements. There's no definition of that. Are you trying to tell me the house built in 1950 to current codes? Codes have changed, now are we required to take and rewire the whole place to bring in the code? I mean, it's such a broad definition that it's impossible to interpretate. Lead-based paint hazards, we have to give a booklet for any place that's built before 1978. Are you trying to tell us that we have to remediate all the lead in these places? If that's the case, you're just going to see vacant properties, nobody's going to do that. I mean, we need some clarification on this stuff. And the, part of the whole thing is withhold rent if a unit is unfit for human habitation. And I guess the question I have, are you admitting your rental inspection program isn't working? If we have properties that are uninhabitable after this may years of your rental program, inspection program, is it a complete failure? That's, it's just mind-boggling here. And you have also permit service animals, which I agree with, and/or assisted animals, and there's no definition on that. That just leaves it wide open. I mean, if somebody has a llama, we have to make accommodations for a llama to be in a place, you know, I guess, you know, we need some definitions here. And the application fee was already covered by others, I won't redo that. You have, tenants have the right to host visitors without incurred additional fees. You know, many of our units that we have, we include the water, sewer, trash, even hot water, heat. So, by having additional tenants for a long period of time, that raises our cost. So, we typically, if somebody wants somebody to come stay for a month, two months, whatever, we do charge an additional fee because they are using, you know, additional services that we are paying for. So, you know, I mean, you're really just saying that they have all the rights. And then you're saying about the landlords, so, include a copy of the Article 354. This takes and puts additional burdens on landlords, from a secretary having to do it, you know, and so that's just going to raise rents. The more that we are required to do, whenever you're saying this, it's going to be rare on your website, it's fully accessible to them. But if you're saying we constantly have to be monitoring your website for changes, and then updating the tenants on this, it just is additional cost, that's going to raise rents even more. Looking at my daughter's notes now here, so, I guess the other side of the coin is, what actions do we have when a tenant trashes a place, retaliates against us? Because, you know, they haven't been a good tenant, but we try to say, okay, hey, you could fulfill your lease, but we're not renewing it. And I could show you pictures of what happened when we gave somebody a two-month notice, and how they left the place. It would turn your stomach. In fact, I had to put a respirator on to go in the place because they dumped cat litter all over. You know, literally, there was four cat litter boxes in the place on top of what was just dumped on the floor. So, you know, I mean, again, we get retaliated against all the time. I think most of everything is the same, but, you know, the tenants come into our buildings, they accept the property as it is, and of course, we take care of our, we reinvest in all of our properties. But at the same time, you know, whenever a tenant leaves it worse than whenever they've received it, what is our retaliation other than going through the court process? And all they have to do is move and not give us a forwarding address, and we're dead in the water. So, again, where is our bill of rights? Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir.
Good morning, I'm Melinda Hall, I live in zip code 16505. I find myself grateful for your support on ordinance O2-2025, which does include the Tenant Bill of Rights. I'm hoping today you will vote to pass the amendment so that Section 354.05 can be revised so that it's a shorter length in order to be included in leases. I think that's good for landlords and renters because it presents rights and responsibilities of the broader law that go beyond what's in the direct lease. Many ordinances need amendments, and so I'm grateful that we are amending this, and it sounds like there are more amendments we should consider in regards to security deposits. And I do think, based on some phone calls we've received, there's a lot of lack of clarity around the escrow of rent process, and that doesn't benefit anyone. I think the comments tonight were well-said about renter education, and I'm grateful for all of the landlords who've shown up today, and all the folks who've shown up on the renter side, because unless we're having good conversations, and unless we're fully understanding the situation from both perspectives, we will remain in an intransigent position, which is really not good for anybody. And so I'm grateful to have heard the comments made today, and grateful to consider what that looks forward, looks like moving forward, particularly around the education components, because properties should never be trashed by either party. I'm going to switch gears dramatically, and I'm not speaking for the Erie Spiritual Coalition as I just was, and I'm not speaking for the other organization for which I work. But I'm wondering what role council has in promoting ethical behavior within the city, particularly in regards to the highly political statement issued on the city website, therefore effectively on city letterhead, called, "City of Erie Calls Out Inaccurate Statements About the City's Finances." It reads to me like an electoral argument, taking on quote from the article, "The Mayor's Opponent," which sounds more like something addressed in an election, not from the city formally. I hope we don't let such ethical and legal violations stand or become the norm. The PA Ethics Code exists for good reason. Election campaigns and the work of actual governing bodies should remain separate for the sake of the work done by the governing entities. So, thank you for your time, thank you for your work.
Thank you.
Good morning, I'm Mardia Wachuku. I'm a resident of Erie. I'm a renter and a community organizer for Erie County United. I didn't plan on speaking this morning, so I hope I am able to make my thoughts cohesive, so I apologize if they are not. I support the Tenant Bill of Rights, but I agree with the statements from some of the landlords that where there might be confusion, amendments should be considered so that every party can be well-protected. But I also believe that this bill of rights is an opportunity for us as a whole community to come together and continue to have conversations about our infrastructure problems when it comes to housing, the affordability crisis when it comes to housing, and the quality of inspections and code enforcement. I don't plan to be a renter forever, I do desire to be a homeowner, so I hope that there is an understanding, and I know there are landlords who have an understanding that renters are not coming from a place of antagonism, we're coming from a place of not every person is privileged like me to have landlords that are understanding people. There are many people in this community, be it new Americans, be it longtime Erie ites, who are living in slumlord conditions, and this piece of policy is just one step in a broader state and national conversation when it comes to housing stock. To the questions about all the different roles and how it might impact landlords and the affordability, I agree, perhaps some of these things may become costly. I think that's an opportunity for us to say, as a city, county, and state, what kind of funding sources should we look into to advocating the governor and our state representatives to help afford our housing repair stocks? I'll use the Whole Home Repairs Program from 2022 as an example. You know, here in Erie County, we fixed about twenty-five properties across the city, there's still about a million dollars in the coffers. In the first round of the programming, landlords had the ability to apply and get funding grants to help repairs. Homeowners were also able to tap into that. We're at the point now where we're asking Judge Shapiro, our governor, to put more money into those coffers. So, I think this bill of rights should pass today, and other opportunities where we try to bridge the relationship between tenants and landlord should be considered and taken seriously, in that we all, as renters, homeowners, and landlords, should better advocate our county, state, and federal governments for funding dollars to repair our lead issues, to repair our roofing issues, to repair all the different issues, because Pennsylvania is a very old state. So, we're fighting an infrastructure fighting battle as much as we're dealing with our social differences. So, I hope that all made sense. Moving to a different topic, I was not here for a few weeks ago, when people were talking about immigration issues, I'm a West African immigrant, though I may not be the target of these various raids from the federal government, I think it's very important for a city that claims to be a welcoming city to take a stance when it comes to people of vulnerable communities feeling targeted and harassed when it comes to state and local officials. And to the last statement that Reverend Hall just said around the city using a public page to make political attacks, I actually read through the full report, I found it incredibly helpful to get the status of the city and where we are right now. What I disagreed with it was the framing of it as a political attack, I don't think it needed to be produced in that manner. I think it was unethical, I think, you know, seeing where we are as a country makes sense that these kind of behaviors would trickle down locally, but I want Erie to be better than that. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, my name is Renee Brown Wagner. I reside in McCain, but I have rental properties in Erie. And what I think I bring to the discussion today is a perspective from kind of all sides of the story. While there are buildings that weren't cared for properly by the landlords because they were only concerned about profit, there are also instances where there are landlords who try to be good landlords, who try to take care of their buildings, and I can cite a couple of examples of my own for your consideration. I have a property that... I have a property that, and when I did the credit application, I overlooked the fact that these people were college students on, I'm not sure the proper terminology, they came from out of the country for educational reasons, and they hadn't had a chance to build their credit yet. And so I overlooked that, gave them a chance, brought them into my building, and the end result of that was any money that I took in for that entire year, not to mention the fact that I have expenses on the property as well, I pay the water, sewer, and trash bill, I had mortgage payment, et cetera, still in the building, every dime that they paid me in rent, including that which I put towards those expenses, I put back into the property after they moved down. Because even though the lease said that they should take care of the lawn, and that was their responsibility, and the rent reflected that, they did not. They didn't clean, they didn't do anything. I had to have three different companies in there to help me keep, get the building clean because I also work a job. I didn't have time to spend all of that time doing that. I could have taken that approximately $12,000 worth of money that I put back into that building for that year that tenant was there, and I could have replaced my windows. When the city comes in and says, well, your yard's too high, you have to mow that within so many days, or you're going to be fined, you haven't seen my lease, and you don't know if that's the tenant's responsibility or if that's my responsibility. I think that you need to listen to a lot more of both sides of the story. I wanted to applaud the gentleman who said we need a landlord's bill of rights. I have a second circumstance where I had a tenant who was a victim, and SafeNet helped her get into my property. I let her get in early. I donated items for her, my office donated items for her to have, she had no furniture, et cetera. But when I went to inspect the property, I found that she was violating the lease by smoking in the property, by not keeping it clean, and when I kindly asked her to do a better job in the kitchen, she got very violent with me. When I took it, took her for eviction, I got the ruling from the district justice for possession, but she had free legal help because of her lack of income. She got fired from her job, I'm not sure the circumstances there. I didn't, I had to pay an attorney. I had to go in front of a judge. The lease ended at the end of December that year, but the judge allowed her to stay beyond the end of the lease before we finally got to hear the case. And then when they got to hear the case, they found for me that I had the right to evict her, and that I was in the right and all of that, and they upheld the ruling of the eviction and the possession, but they gave her another 30 days while I paid the utilities. Well, I had to, again, another instance where I had to put a lot of money back into the apartment to get it rentable for the next person. So I would like all of you to please take into consideration that the landlords do have a right to, to have our perspective considered in all of these. Thank you.
Good morning. My name's Dave Ullig. I live in the city of Erie. Three things I want to comment on. First of all, I am looking forward to a full explanation of the incident with Erie Police and ICE that was described at the last city council meeting. It was very disturbing, and looking forward to the full report on that. Second, last council meeting, I believe it's a unanimous vote in favor of the home rule charter process. Still haven't seen any information from any of you explaining why you voted for that, why it's something that should move forward. It's complicated. I know it isn't voted on until November, but there's a lot of information that needs to be disseminated to the public. It'd be very helpful if everybody in the city understood what this very important process is. And third, I am requesting that the administration and the council move forward, commit to a sustainable funding plan for the Erie Zoo. We've heard the challenges that the zoo has. The city is not in a position to sustain the zoo. They have a willing partner who is capable of sustaining the zoo, and I think the city and the council should really work, work very hard to make sure that partnership occurs. Every day that you don't do that is a day closer to not having the zoo the way it is, the way that we want it to be to serve the city and to serve the region. So thank you for the efforts on that, on all three of those items. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
My name is Mandy Loomis, and I am a property manager for Brick and Mortar Property Management. We manage approximately 1,000 units between the city and the county. I just think that from a landlord's perspective, that we are not thought about in this whole process. We have to do everything the legal way, of course, and we have tenants that will, then if they don't like your answer, they don't like what you're, what you're saying to them, then all of a sudden it's a discrimination case. I've had tenants that have tried to ruin my career, my life, my income, because they felt that they were being wronged because they can't sell drugs out of a window, toss them out of a window, and they don't feel that that's a lease violation. So there's so many different avenues that I think that we need to take, and I think that everybody needs to listen to both sides. We never want an empty. We also don't want to be a part of their life. You know, I mean, if you pay your rent and you are doing the right thing, you know, you wouldn't, there would be no interaction. It's not real life, but it would be great, you know? But I think that everybody needs to look at both sides. It's not just a tenant bill of rights. There also has to be another side of that where tenants don't feel that they can ruin everyone's life because, you know, if it's not, if it's, if it's this tenant bill of rights and that doesn't work for them, then they're going to file, you know, a discrimination case and go with fair housing. And that's, I would like for everybody to take that into consideration. Thank you for your time.
My name is Heather Manska. I'm here as a city of Erie resident and also here on behalf of Bauer Property Management. We are a member of the housing, the apartment association and offer many rental properties here in the city of Erie. Keep it short and sweet, just here to address that tenant bill of rights and to serve as an additional voice, as you've heard today, to request reconsideration of the clause within regarding the tenant application fees. The administrative costs to the landlords are there and do exist with tenant screening. Also would ask that the vague definition of application versus hold deposit be clarified in an amendment and defined more clearly. Thank you.
My name is Sean Dunic. I'm a landlord in the city of Erie, resident of the city of Erie. Came here about five, six years ago. Started this new business. It's a highly emotional thing to make an investment in a community. And all these landlords, that's exactly what they do every day. I find that it's misguided to consider this sort of, I don't know if it's an ordinance, in the context of a rental registration scheme that's clearly not working. I was once cited for not having big enough numbers on the property of a property that I had acquired. So I question and I challenge, where's the rental registration department? Why are they not enforcing the very code violations that are supposed to be done? If there are slumlords in the city of Erie, who's responsible for that? It's not fellow landlords, it's the city and the registration department itself. So before we look to kind of create this tenant bill of rights, I think it's much more important to really focus on the things that the city has within its control, for example, like fining landlords who are not doing the things that they need to do. And all that is within the capacity of the city, as I understand it right now. Thank you.
Good morning, everyone. My name is Angel Mora, and I'm a resident of zip code 16441. And I'm here today to speak on support of the ordinance that is being introduced. And just like I've been hearing from my fellow residents here from Erie County, I do think that it's really important to go ahead and continue to have discourse, to go ahead and continue to have democratic debate, to go ahead and make sure that all parties feel understood, that all parties feel like they're being able to get their point across. And going back to why I feel like this is an important ordinance to go ahead and continue to be supported is that I'm a renter myself, I'm a new American, immigrated to the country back in 2016, and although I had the privilege and the luck, and I was really lucky to have a great landlord while I was living in the city of Erie, and then my second landlord was not a K landlord, I do feel like it is important for everyone to go ahead and make sure that people are guaranteed the right to go ahead and communicate effectively with their landlords, that if they have problems, they can go ahead and be addressed in a timely manner. I mean, hearing from fellow, from a couple of my colleagues, different students here in Gannon University, as well as Mercyhurst, that there are some landlords that are really struggling to go ahead and do their job. And although I feel like the landlords who have been able to go ahead and attend today's meeting are really vocal about how they're trying to do a really good job for their tenants, I also want to go ahead and point out that we're looking to address the landlords that are not doing a really good job, the landlords that are failing to go ahead and uphold the values and the ideas of providing fair housing to people. Therefore, I urge all of you to continue to support this meeting, to support this ordinance. And to my fellow, yeah, the fellow attendees, if you have more points, feel free to come in. Thank you.
Are there any other citizens to be heard? Are there any other citizens to be heard? Are there any other citizens to be heard? Hearing none. City clerk.
Ordinances for final passage. Council File Number 16518, official ordinance 292025, an ordinance appropriating the sum of $442,377.30 from unappropriated and unanticipated revenue for the expenditure from the sewer fund balance. These funds were received from revenue replacement in 2022 to pay for the incinerator repair and upgrades at the wastewater treatment plant, and were only partially expended during 2023 and 2024. This project is ongoing and needs to be re-appropriated for 2025. Sponsored by council member Titus, seconded by council member Flores, the Council File Ordinance Bill Number 16518, and now known as Official File Ordinance 292025, be finally passed by city council. Members Brzezinski, Flores, Nelson, Schaff, Titus, Troop, Witherspoon. City council passed Official File Ordinance 292025 by yea seven nay zero. Council File Number 16519, official ordinance 302025, an ordinance appropriating the sum of $137,600 from unappropriated and unanticipated revenue for the expenditure thereof, the purchase of two traffic investigation vehicles and related equipment through the Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development, Grant Number C000090421. Sponsored by council member Schaff, seconded by council member Brzezinski, the Council File Bill Number 16519, and now known as Official File Ordinance 302025, be finally passed by city council. Members Brzezinski, Flores, Nelson, Schaff, Titus, Troop, Witherspoon. City council passed Official File Ordinance 302025, finally by yea seven nay zero. Council File Number 16520, official ordinance 312025, an ordinance appropriating the sum of $355,300 from unappropriated fund balance and the risk fund for the expenditure thereof. Funds will be used to cover unexpected expenses. Sponsored by council member Nelson, seconded by council member Flores, the Council File Ordinance Bill Number 16520, and now known as Official File Ordinance 312025, be finally passed by city council. Members Brzezinski, Flores, Nelson, Schaff, Titus, Troop, Witherspoon. City council passed Official File Ordinance 312025, finally by yea seven nay zero. Council File Number 16521, official ordinance 322025, an ordinance amending the codified ordinances of the city of Erie, Part One, Administrative Code Title VII, Employment Provisions, Pensions, Article 145, 149, Firefighters Pension Fund by amending various provisions to comply with the recent Act 111 award. Sponsored by council member Schaff, seconded by council member Troop, the Council File Ordinance Number 16521, and now known as Official File Ordinance 322025, be finally passed by city council. Members Brzezinski, Flores, Nelson, Schaff, Titus, Troop, Witherspoon. City council passed Official File Ordinance 322025, finally by yea seven nay zero. City council File Number 16522, official ordinance 332025, an ordinance amending and supplementing the codified ordinances of the city of Erie, namely Article 354, rental housing, specifically to amend Section 35405B that established the rights and obligation as the owners and occupants of rental housing in the city of Erie, in particular, the rights under federal, state, and local laws that apply to the landlord-tenant relationship. Sponsored by council member Titus, seconded by council member Flores, the Council File Ordinance Bill Number 16522, and now known as Official File Ordinance 332025, be finally passed by city council. Members Brzezinski, Flores, Nelson, Schaff, Titus, Troop, Witherspoon. City council passed Official File Ordinance 332025, finally by yea seven nay zero. Ordinances for first reading. Council File Number 16523, an ordinance appropriating the sum of $10,500 from unappropriated and unanticipated revenue for the expenditure thereof. This is for the Pennalec Generator Revenue. Sponsored by council member Titus, seconded by council member Flores, the Council File Ordinance Number 16523, haven't been read, is hereby adopted on first reading by city council. Members Brzezinski, Flores, Nelson, Schaff, Titus, Troop, Witherspoon. City council read and adopt Council File Ordinance 16523 by yea seven nay zero on first reading. Council File Number 16524, an ordinance appropriating the sum of $500,000 from unappropriated and unanticipated revenue for the expenditure thereof, for upgrades to the Erie Zoo Otter Exhibit to be completed as a sub-grantee. Pass-through funding is provided from the Pennsylvania Redevelopment Assistant Capital Program, RACP grant. Sponsored by council member Titus, seconded by council member Flores, the Council File Ordinance Number 16524, haven't been read, is hereby adopted on first reading by city council. Members Brzezinski, Flores, Nelson, Schaff, Titus, Troop, Witherspoon. City council read and adopt Council File Ordinance 16524 by yea seven nay zero on first reading. Council File Number 16525, an ordinance appropriating the sum of $55,000 from unappropriated and anticipated revenue to be received from PennDOT through the 2023 Automated Red Light Enforcement, ARLE, funding program. These funds will be used to carry out the city of Erie LED Street Light Upgrade Project. Sponsored by council member Titus, seconded by council member Flores, the Council File Ordinance Number 16525, haven't been read, is hereby adopted on first reading by city council. Members Brzezinski, Flores, Nelson, Schaff, Titus, Troop, Witherspoon. City council read and adopt Council File Ordinance 16525 by yea seven nay zero on Council File Number 16526, an ordinance appropriating the sum of $40,000 from unappropriated and unanticipated revenue for the expenditure thereof, for signage at the South Central Fire Station, using grant proceeds from the Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development, CEAP Contract Number C000093428. Sponsored by council member Schaff, seconded by council member Brzezinski, the Council File Ordinance Number 16526, haven't been read, is hereby adopted on first reading by city council. council. Members Brzezinski, Flores, Nelson, Schaff, Titus, Troop, and Witherspoon. City council read and adopt council file ordinance 16526 by yea seven nay zero on first reading. Council file number 16527, an ordinance appropriating the sum of $51,000 from the, is this the same one? From unappropriated and anticipated revenue for the expenditure thereof, for using grant proceeds for the Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development, CEAP, contract number C000093603. Sponsored by council member Brzezinski, seconded by council member Troop, the council file ordinance 16527 haven't been read, is hereby adopted on first reading by city council. Members Brzezinski, Flores, Nelson, Schaff, Titus, Troop, Witherspoon. City council read and adopt council file ordinance 16527 by yea seven nay zero on first reading. And finally, council file number 16528, an ordinance appropriating the sum of $1,189,944 from unappropriated and unanticipated revenue for the expenditure thereof in the capital fund. Sponsored by council member Nelson, seconded by council member Titus, the council file ordinance 16528 haven't been read, is hereby adopted on first reading by city council.
Discussion.
Okay. Discussion?
Yes. Hey, I just want to, this is also related to New Business number nine. I think this is something that we can highlight a little bit on. In the last three years, we've not taken any money out of our capital sinking fund. As long as I've been on council, we've always restricted that. It takes a supermajority of council to take money out of it, and it's usually been a given, but we've allowed that money to grow. That sinking fund has grown from 11 or 12 million dollars when I first got on council to, I think we're at 17 now? Yeah, it was a bad quarter. You know who to blame for that. But in the last two years, as the stock market has thrived up until recently, you know, we've seen this fund grow by restricting the taking out of it. We now have more money to invest in the capital needs. What this means is that when we had that ridiculous snowstorm back in November that was a once-in-a-lifetime type of issue, we now have an extra half a million dollars to invest in paving the streets because of smart fiscal decisions that, between the Controller and the mayor's office and city council, that we've been able to restrict these things and make sure that we're flush, not just in our paving for this year, but our paving in 2040, as this fund has grown so much. So, we'll have a second vote on and transfer here later, but I thought that, you know, these are a bunch of vague things with a bunch of unappropriated and unanticipated money for all the people that are watching the show. And this is one particular spot where, as you drive down some roads that are difficult, maybe you'll appreciate knowing that there's an extra half a million going into paving this year, more than what we usually do, to address the condition that things came to be this past fall. Thanks.
Any other discussion? Voting on the ordinance, council members Brzezinski, Flores, Nelson, Schaff, Titus, Troop, and Witherspoon. City council read and adopt council file ordinance 16528 by yea seven nay zero on first reading. Council president, this takes us to New Business. I'd like to note that the transfer number two on the agenda and contracts number five has been pulled from the agenda at the request of the administration.
Motion to move the balance?
It's been moved, remove the balance?
Second.
Second.
Any separations?
President, Witherspoon, you had requested number five to be separated. That is in regarding to the-
Under 500 New Business.
The sign.
Any other separations? Voting on the balance of the agenda, members Brzezinski, Nelson, Flores, Schaff, Titus, Okay. This is agenda number five under New Business. Resolve by the council of the city of Erie that the proper city officials be and are hereby authorized and directed to execute an easement agreement between the city of Erie and CFC-Erie 1 LLC for UPMC, 921 Peach Street, Erie PA 16501. Index number 163005100 for the installation of two signs projecting into the rights-of-way of Peach and West 9th Street in compliance with the attached City Engineers Meets and Bounds descriptions and drawings. Discussion?
In caucus, it was suggested that we moved to table as there was concerns that this would impede the walkway, and we were hoping to get, per discussions in caucus, information around how far will this go out into the sidewalk so that it is not interrupting or making it difficult for people to pass?
Any other discussion?
My concern was the height of the sign, you know, if, could a five, seven person walk under? Could a kid walk under? And the other was the extension, how far out? Is it taking too much room for a person with a wheelchair? Or, you know, sometimes they roll together. Are they taking that space from wheelchair individuals? That was my concern.
In caucus, there was a request or suggestion around tabling this item until we're able to get more information.
Motion to table?
Mr. President, just quickly, I guess my concern isn't that much. Our sidewalk watcher, Ms. Tepler, isn't here today, and she didn't call, she didn't call me anyway, to have a problem with this. So if she doesn't have a problem with it, and you know she's aware of it, I think we're okay. Thank you.
Do we have a first and second to table?
Second.
Is that Tyler and Mal?
I'll move forward at table to, or a motion to table, with the second coming from Mr. Witherspoon.
Okay, motion to table, members Brzezinski, Flores, Titus, or Nelson, Schaff-
No.
Okay, motion to table passes, not to table, one, two, three, four. It's table, it's five to two. Okay, this moves us to committee reports.
Thank you. We'll start with Councilwoman Flores.
Hello, good morning, everyone. It was a bit of a change for our morning meeting to have quite a bit of citizens to be heard, so it's always nice to have visitors. On May 5th, we had a Historical Review Commission meeting at 1:00 PM, and then on April 23rd, we had our Environmental Advisory Council meeting at 3:00 PM. These meetings, you can go back and watch on our Facebook and our YouTube. I do know that the Environmental Advisory Council is working on some things, and they will be asking to present them to council in the coming weeks, so we'll be hearing from them soon. We have a zoning hearing board meeting at 1:00 PM on May 13th, and that is going to be held here at City Chambers. I also just wanted people to be aware that with it warming up, that we're going to have a lot of pedestrians in the streets. I know it can be a little exhausting to look out for them, and they don't necessarily make themselves visible at night, so let's just make sure we're doing our due diligence, looking out for the residents who are walking in the streets in the warmer months. I don't have much else to report, other than just be safe, look at a, go to a baseball game when they're in town. They really show up and show out for us when they are here, and that's all I have to report.
Game starts in 30 minutes. All right, as far as my report, I want to thank council for passing the street renaming ordinance this time. You know, very grateful and hoping to have many of us go and celebrate that when we have a chance to unveil that street. I want to address a couple of the statements that were made during Citizens to Be Heard. You know, one of the citizens said, you know, "Something needs done," and then followed up shortly thereafter by saying, "This isn't going to work." And that mentality of it is always one of those things that just always has me gritting my teeth, because I feel like that's a mentality we get stuck in the middle of a lot from the dais, as to trying to come up with solutions and then having solutions get doubted, but everyone understanding that we need solutions. So I've got some solutions that I think that we've done as a council that have, you know, that I think we all should have some optimism about. When talking about blight, city councils passed 11 ordinances in the last two and a half years to address blight. And in those, seven of them have had revenue sources so that good property owners don't have to fund bad issues in our city. So, you know, we have this issue in our city that the taxes become too burdensome, and it's good neighbors that are paying those burdens. So this is something where I've felt pretty, you know, we need to continue to work on the implementation. I'm not telling you things are fixed, I'm just telling you that we continue to provide solutions. Along with that, other statements of dealing with ordinances that frankly, the response a while back was, "This needs done now," and then we're going to be dealing with six months of modifications. That's a frustration to me, especially when I thought we didn't have enough time to do our due diligence a few months ago. Reporting on, oh, and other thing is, I reread the press release. I would say that using the term "the mayor's opponent" is tricky. Maybe a political, maybe the term should be "political candidate" if further misinformation gets spread. I do also take some of the parts of that press release are not just directed at the mayor, they're directed at City Hall, and frankly, they're directed at the seven of us that pass the budget. And that's the part that I take particular offense to. But using a term "the mayor's opponent" multiple times, that may, that may be too much of a direct correlation, maybe "political candidate" would be better. The rest of it, I felt pretty comfortable with. Reporting on a couple of the spots where I'm liaison, the airport authority, they just had their annual audit. The airport authority has no debt, they're the only authority that I know of that has that. I didn't do my due diligence, look at all of them. The revolving loan fund from the city helps fund the Fly Erie Fund, that has led to decreased cost for employment, cost per employment, from $40 down to $11 with the new airlines that we've brought in. And the flight to Tampa Bay has been announced that it will return next year for longer than what we got it for this year. So we do continue to see expanded services. And then reporting on this upcoming week, we'll have meetings for the capital fund, which we just took that withdrawal from, as well as the pension. The report on the pension is that we are $192.4 million ahead of where it was at the time of inception compared to the 6% assumption rate. This is stuff that comes back really big, you know, when we look, this is, this is something that I can say may lead to future tax decreases, or at least offsetting to make sure that our budgets are more stable in the future. But that's a huge number when we're talking about a half a billion dollars nearly invested, that really we've got to congratulate that, that, that change that occurred, and the opportunities that we have ahead to use that to the benefit of the taxpayers, as that fund has, I mean, being that far ahead is ridiculous. Let's, I'm going to be real clear about that. So, taxpayers should be relieved and excited about the state of our finances. And that concludes my report, thank you.
I'll go through my liaison positions and then come back to a few other statements. So the Erie Land Bank met on 4/21, the board had accepted some of the offers that were made on some of the land bank properties. There was a project proposal that came through for Habitat Humanity that looks very promising, so I'm excited to see that move forward. Also, the results of the audit were conducted, and there were recommendations made about restructuring internal audits, to which there was already a plan developed, and that was moving forward with the land bank. The, excuse me, on April 26, councilors Flores, Nelson, Schaff, and myself attended the Erie County United Town Hall on Housing in Erie. I found it to be a very informative forum, and it was great to hear directly from community members, and I do hope to see more, more like this happening, because I thought it was a great way for us to engage. EMTA met on April 28. There's a lot happening with EMTA. They had a day of lobbying down in Harrisburg, and the CEO had shared that they met with other transit authorities down there, and their feeling, and left their feeling that the conversations around the need to continue and to invest in public transit was well received. They are expanding and exploring a bike sharing program. Ridership continues to grow, especially as compared to how far it had dipped and rebuilding since the pandemic. And they are diligently working on meeting community needs and trying to find ways to respond to the growing ridership. We did have, there's been a lot of discussion around the zoo. The zoo had a board meeting on April 22nd, and the Lantern Festival is up. If you guys haven't seen it yet, I highly recommend, it's a truly awesome experience. But the main theme, and I think what is on everybody's mind right now, is around the discussion with property transfer. There's a lot of questions that are being raised by council and the administration, and particularly with Erie events. And so I think for us to move this forward, there has to be more convening, where we need to sit down and really make sure that these questions are answered, because the last thing that I would like to see happen is anything with the zoo. I don't want them to have to make the tough internal decisions, I need to, we want to make sure that we're wrapping around this regional asset, and we need all players that are, that are at this table to have genuine commitment to finding a pathway forward. We have to keep meeting, this isn't something that we can, we can push off. This has been going on for quite some time, and we're at the point where it is in crisis mode. I know it might feel urgent to some of us, or that this is just now being brought forward, but the fact is, is it's been here, and we haven't found a solution. There's a solution that's on the table that we're not all comfortable with yet, but we need to find a way on how to get there, because right now there isn't a Plan B. I will say, in closing out some of my statements, I do think the use of the public forum, or the public page to post the words that were posted, even though I know I will be accused of having a biased stance, I do think we really butted up against some ethics there with, with using that platform to say things that could have been said and cleared out in a very different direction without making it political. I do think that there are giant glaring issues that we have that we are not talking about. We have a very big reliance, and I'm genuinely hopeful that we get the HRC passed and that we're able to do the things that we need to do and shift and make a stronger region before that. But we know that federal cuts are coming, we know that the tax base has drastically reduced as population has left. We know that a big part of what we are looking at is grant funding to make sure that we continue up, and these are all things, as we have all watched the news since, since November, that are directly under attack. And so I think that there is, there's a lot of reason to be nervous. There have been great things that have happened, but there's a lot of reason to be quite nervous about what the future holds, as there's going to be some very big budget questions that are going to come before all of us. And so I think that it's, there's a lot of great that's happened, and there's a lot of changes that still need to occur.
Thank you. Mr. Brzezinski.
Mr. President, thank you. As you can see, as I shiver here, I didn't get the message that they turned the heat off already. It's cold. Last, last meeting, we sat here and we were dripping, it was so warm. I didn't get the message. Anyway, my report, first off with the Port Authority. Several people had asked me why the lights were off on our tower. Actually, the birds had a migration- Actually, the birds had a migration party, and being cognizant of the environment, we actually turned the lights off on the tower, just one night, to make sure the birds didn't get confused at where they were going. They didn't give us any notes telling us where they were going, but we wanted to make sure it was safe. Lights are back on. I'm not too sure that everybody's aware of this, but the first Tuesday of every month is a free day to go up in the tower. Reports are that we had over 200 people go through there this past Tuesday. Kind of exciting. If you've never done it, it's something you can afford to do anytime you want to, but if you want to do it for free, first Tuesday of the month, okay? Other exciting things with the port, the water taxi is going to start, I think, the 22nd of May. The Port Authority wanted me to let the general public know that if you want to buy advance tickets, they're going to have 20%, 25% discounts, discounts for veterans, senior citizens, those type of things. If you're interested in that, portauthority.com, their website, you'll be able to get all that up there. That was quite a bit, wasn't it? That was only one of them. The other one, three letters, ZOO, liaison to Erie Events, we have to get something put together for the zoo. I would like to ask the city clerk and Mr. President to get a study group together. I would like to invite the county executive, because I sincerely believe that our zoo is a regional asset. And as a regional asset, we should be getting help from the entire county, because, believe me, with the emails that I received the last few days, being pro zoo, a lot of those people aren't Erie people, not city Erie people. It's wonderful that they come to our zoo. But I think the more people we get involved, I don't care if we invite Mill Creek Township, supervisors, get as many people involved as we can, so we can come to a solution, because it's kind of frustrating. The worst thing that could happen is that we lose that zoo. Probably everybody sitting out there either spent time there themselves, or they took their children or grandchildren there. I'm one of those. Five of our own and 12 grandchildren, all of them spent time in the summer there. It's something, it's an asset that we have to, have to get a handle on and move forward with it. So please get this scheduled, Mr. President, as soon as we can, so we can move forward. With the administration, of course. They cover everybody. I think I did. And that takes me to saying goodnight. Don't forget to vote. Thank you.
Mr. President, may I?
Yes.
Just could I add one more clarification around the ordinance that we just talked about with the Tenet Bill of Rights? I wanted to report out, what was presented in front of us today was not, it was strictly an amendment around condensing what the landlords had to present. The Tenet Bill of Rights was passed two months, three months ago, one version of it, but then there was another version that, which much of the discussion was about, was passed almost a year ago. So it's already on the books tonight, or today, we were just passing the amendment piece. And so we have heard, and there's going to be another amendment that's coming forward with a lot of the suggestions that were made. So, but today, in front of us, all we could address was that one part. I just wanted to clarify that.
Thank you.
Mr. President, the only thing I have to say today is congratulations to Carter Storaki, Storaki family on the street renaming. And really, just in regards to the landlord tenants, seems like the word "relationship" is something, ongoing relationship is what I'm hearing, needs to continue to develop in this situation. And I also agree with Dave about the Home Rule Charter. We just need to have, you know, make sure that we're all understanding what's going on with that situation. So that's it for today.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. Please excuse my length, because this may be lengthy. First of all, as the liaison for Erie Water Works, I received a media alert yesterday. Keep Pennsylvania Beautiful, Erie Water Works, Erie Western Pennsylvania Port Authority, Lake Shore Towing Services, Regional Science Consortium at Truck, Gannon University, City of Erie, Keep Erie County Beautiful, Erie County, Department of Planning, and Erie County Conservation District. Litter Control Boom will be deployed at Erie Water Works, the third such installation in Prescott Bay. This deployment coincides with Drinking Water Week, observed from May 4th to May 10th, which aims to increase public understanding of water systems and the vital role of safe drinking water. Erie Water Works employees will be participating in a beach cleanup along the shoreline between the administration building and the Myrtle Street Outfall. With funding from the Department of Environmental Protection, Coastal Resource Management, Keep Pennsylvania Beautiful is continuing its collaboration with numerous individuals, organizations, and businesses to actively address and combat litter that makes its way into the waters of Prescott Bay, Lake Erie, and ultimately, the ocean. Through the installation of Litter Control Booms, devices designed to capture floating debris and prevent its spread, this initiative actively works to safeguard waterways by collecting and removing trash before it can cause further environmental harm. So they're having an event May 8 at 10:00 AM at the Erie Water Works 340 West Bay Front Parkway. So I'm very, very, very excited to be there. Hopefully, anything to combat the litter problem in the water, land, and air is awesome. So I attended the swearing-in of the K-9 Dogs Police. They're actively helping our city. May 5, CDBG hearing. There was a public presentation at 10:00 AM, and 6:00 PM, of which I spoke at the morning one. April 24, Central City Booker Washington Meeting, at which there was discussion there about the Sisters of St. Joseph moved their place where they're going to have their vegetable stand. I had it, but I lost it, but they're going to continue it this summer, so that's awesome and amazing. Thank you for them in that area. The Tow and Review Board, April 24, we had a meeting, and then there's another one tomorrow, that I will be there at 1:30. So people present to us again their problems. There's, I, thank you, Dr. Titus, mentioned the Housing Crisis Town Hall. The Erie Land Bank meeting was good. They, I attended the Water Authority meeting, and Governor Shapiro came into the Central Fire Station, April 24. President Witherspoon, and Chuck Nelson, and myself were there. He thanked and supported the firefighters, and is putting $30 million, hopefully, into the competitive grant program for Pennsylvania to be able to help the fire companies purchase lifesaving equipment and recruit firefighters. So as you know, very sadly, his house burned down, had a big fire, so that's just terrible. The Grant Grassroots Coalition Meeting, I attended that at the Quality of Life Center. And the Pension Meeting, Randy, it's good to hear your voice. I never shouted you out when you retired. God bless you and your retirement, but it's good to see you still being on the board of the pension. I flew Breeze for the first time, and it was awesome. So actually, I thought it was better than Frontier Experiences, so that's awesome. April 21, Fred Etupfer and I walked with, we started at Pittsburgh Avenue, and we went to all of the crossings, and we took pictures and reported about the crossings. And at each crossing, there were people that we saw traveling north to south, north to south. So it's really imperative that the railroad, working along with Pendot, makes it a safe crossing from north to south, because we have a lot of pedestrians, a lot of bicyclists who use these north-to-south crossings. We also walked under the underpasses, and unfortunately, found a man there who had tripped under the Sassafras underpass. And we did find lighting not being good, like it needs to be upgraded. So that's a Penelec issue, because they do maintain the lights. And unfortunately, I have been in talk that it's just, they're so old, that it's hard to, we need to upgrade that whole lighting system then. So there's quite a few lights out underneath there where it's dark and unsafe. So going to work on that. Country Fair, awesome. I think it's going to be the best one. I was in there the other day. Yesterday, they had a Trades Council meeting that I listened to, and it was a very, very unique situation. And I feel for the tradesperson. I hope that gets resolved. And those meetings are online, so you can just go on the media to listen to it if you like. This week, Friday, at 11 o'clock, there's a police new officers ceremony. Four officers are going to be coming in to replace the retirement ones, and the ones that were hired not too long ago have been in training, and so they're ready to go out for the spring and summer. Kudos to Kate Phillip, March 28. Chuck Nelson and I were there. She has Kayden Company that was on the agenda today that we passed, and is in the West 11th Street Building. And it's so wonderful to repurpose buildings. This was a building that probably, if it had not been repurposed, you know, was just going to be in ruin someday, but whoever, you know, put in to make it ready for her, and now they're going to have this wonderful thing that they're in business in Erie. And I love the zoo. I'll be the first person to say, I love, 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 love the zoo. And I have been to zoos throughout our nation, and I think it's wonderful. So we need to stay on top of everything. My big thing is the park where it belongs to the citizens of Erie, Glenwood Park Avenue, and the Horseshoe Pit area. So we have to talk about how that's all going to work out. Happy Mother's Day to everyone. Very, very sadly, a person who is, like my son-in-law, just lost his 52-year-old mother in Florida to cancer. And she just had a birthday yesterday, too, and would have been Mother's Day, and she has also a 13-year-old. And as we all know, who've had good mothers, you know, they're like the glue that holds the family together. Good mothers are super wonderful people. We all do our best, you know. So to all the aunts, grandmothers, everybody, in-laws, anyone who has helped with children, has been a mother to people. I lost my mom at 24 years of age, but so many women stepped into my life to be like a mother. So, you know, just let's give a shout-out and do your best for Mother's Day. Coming up. Thanks.
Thank you very much. The Erie Housing Authority is in the process of completing their five-year strategic plan, and they will submit that by the end of June. And according to the Executive Director, Dusty Dennis, she wanted me to know that she was very appreciative of the Mayor Renee and Chief Dan for their input. Also, the Erie Housing Authority, in conjunction with the Community Health Net, will be opening a health center at the John Haran Garden Apartments for the residents of Erie Housing Authority. That's the entire authority. You don't have to live in the John Haran Apartments, but it's for the authority. And that, hopefully, that will include education and wellness checks. That should be June 11. An open house will be scheduled. May, for the Housing Authority, is considered Affordable Housing Month, and the Executive Director has been interviewed by several stations, and she has appeared on several TV programs. And she, after replacing Mr. Mike, is doing an excellent job in moving the Housing Authority forward. That concludes my report.
Rarity, I have a report. Very briefly, regarding the Erie Zoo. Jeff Beach, who is the chairperson of the board for the zoo, reached out to me yesterday, requesting a meeting. I expect to meet with him in the next couple of days. Will address the concerns that have been raised by council and the mayor, and also the needs and concerns for the zoo. I will be reporting back to you. Hopefully, we'll be able to make some progress. That's all I have.
Good morning, council. I have a few things. I'm going to try not to go as long as Councilwoman Schoff, but I can't promise. So I want to thank everybody who spoke this morning. We got some really good input, and that's why we have public comment, because we need to hear these things. I think we all agree that we need to save the zoo. We just need some additional information. In addition to the request that Ed Betza got, I also received a request from an Erie Events board member, and we'll be following up and meeting hopefully this week. Just so, you know, residents are all clear, I think City Council and the mayor are stewards of this taxpayer property. And so we're just trying to do our due diligence in considering what the request is. And what the request is currently is for 106 acres to be given to Erie Events. That includes Glenwood Golf Course, the Flo Fabrizio Ice Rink, the Glenwood Park and its pavilions and playground, the Horseshoe Courts, Marsh Street, and the property east of Glenwood Park Avenue. Um, also, information regarding financials, excuse me, and the timeline and plan for, um, reaccreditation of the zoo. So, we, we look forward to continuing to work together to find a, a path forward because we are all invested in, in the zoo, and we see the zoo and all this property as, as taxpayer. Uh, it's, it belongs to the taxpayers, and so we want to do our due diligence and make sure we're making the right decisions. Um, in terms of the, the, um, contract that we pulled off the agenda for Paramount Pursuits, I just wanted to clarify, um, that that funding had been allocated previously for, uh, business development. Uh, there had been some funding given to KIVA, uh, to provide matching funding, matching loans, actually. It's, KIVA's a national, an international, uh, organization to help with small business development here locally in Erie for, um, those who are new arrivals, for immigrants, refugees, members of the BIPOC communities, uh, those lower on the socioeconomic ladder, and those re-entering society, um, from being incarcerated. And so, that funding was kind of out there languishing, you know, at this internal, inter- international organization, and we decided we wanted to bring that back to Erie. We've been working with Paramount Pursuits for, well, since 2019, on developing new businesses in Erie, here in Erie. Um, they have a, a proven track record, and so what we were looking to do was to expand the scope and give them additional funding that they had received. Um, they had already received ARP funding. Um, and so, what, what had happened was, we, we've been doing this small business cohort with folks who are interested in starting businesses but don't know where to start. And there's, and then we opened up the flagship grant fund, uh, in January and received 120 grant applications and realized that a lot of people need some assistance with knowing where to start. Uh, they're asking for funding, but they don't have a, a business license, they don't have an EIN number, uh, they don't know where to go to get those things. And what Paramount Pursuits does is they wrap services around their clients, and through the city's funding, they help city residents who are starting businesses for free. And so, we saw a real need there, and that's why we were looking to transfer the funding. But we've pulled it from the agenda so we can meet with the refugee resettlement agencies, um, and, and then discuss that, see if there's an additional role for them as well. Um, in terms of, um, lead, that was brought up today, uh, lead remediation, and I just wanted to let, um, some of the landlords who are left here know that the redevelopment authority of the City of Erie will be announcing very soon, uh, that they're ready to start, um, allocating their lead hazard remediation funding that they received from HUD. Um, they've been working through the process, they're still getting it. Uh, it's, I think, in the vicinity of 4.8 or 4.9 million dollars that will be available to remediate lead in our housing. I also wanted to clarify regarding the rental, um, registration program. The inspections are done by BIU, which is a third party. And, um, what we're finding is that historically, there haven't always been follow-ups to make sure that the landlords who were cited are doing the things that they're supposed to, to do to, to bring, make sure that the, um, inspection is working the way it's supposed to. And so, as you all know, recently, um, we designated one of our property maintenance inspectors to work with BIU, to accompany them on the inspections and to make sure that the follow-ups are happening. So in addition to our other eight property maintenance inspectors who can also, if they're called by a resident, by a tenant who's having an issue with their landlord, that's when Code can enter. Code cannot just enter, um, an apartment because we think there's an issue. They have to be called. Um, and we know there are a lot of really great landlords out there, but our focus is on the ones that aren't so great, that are taking advantage of tenants. And so I think we have to find that balance and ensure that, you know, people aren't being taken advantage of on either side. Um, in terms of large item, that was also brought up, and as you all know, we started our new Code sweeps, and so I wanted to give you an update on that because I think we need to allow it an opportunity to work, and I think it is working. We weren't sure what was going to happen. We thought, "Let's try this, let's see what happens." We started in our first area, and there were 130 courtesy notices given out, uh, to folks who had significant number of large items on their front lawn that they had not appropriately used the large item pickup number to schedule. Um, so, 130 courtesy notices were given out. Upon re-inspection, uh, this week, 119 of them had taken care of the large items and the debris. That leaves 11 that have not done what we asked. Um, they have the notice saying that their trash, their trash bill will receive a $1,400 charge if the city has to remove those items. Um, the Bureau of, bureaus of streets and refuse are preparing to go and remove the, the items from the remaining 11 properties and then bill those property owners on their next trash bill. Um, they're, they're going to get one more notification, uh, and then that is going to happen, and then that area is going to be cleaned up. So, um, you know, we don't want, we actually don't want to be the ones to remove the items because it's a lot of work for our, for our teams here. Um, but if we can get the neighborhoods cleaned up, then it's doing what it needs to do, and, and I think it's pretty impressive that 119 out of 130 took care of it. Um, I want to thank you for, uh, transferring the 4% for the last two years from the Water Reserve Fund. Uh, as Councilwoman Nelson explained, we've gone from about 11 million in that, uh, water reserve to, it's about 16.3 million. And, um, that's going to enable us to do some really exciting things, um, an additional 500,000 in paving, uh, but also some projects that we've been needing to do that are high-priority infrastructure issues, time-sensitive issues in regard to our firehouses, uh, our Police Operations Center, uh, our garage, our city garage. A lot of repairs are needed. So, we look forward to prioritizing those and moving forward. Um, I also want to mention that on the agenda today, um, there was $783,600 in state grants that we appropriated, and, um, I wanted to thank our state representatives, Mersky and Harkins, um, and Bizarro also helps us a lot, even though he doesn't represent the city. Uh, their teams are all great, and, and also Senator Loughlin and his team. Uh, without that funding, we wouldn't be able to purchase this equipment. And so the state has come through for us time and time again, and, uh, and we really appreciate it. And then finally, I just wanted to, um, let all of council know that we are working on, um, an RFP for our second five-year financial management plan. For those of you who were around for the first one, uh, you know that we took that very seriously. We had a great plan, we implemented a lot of the things that came out of it, uh, which, which was, which is what enabled us to, uh, tackle the deficits of the last five years. And, um, you know, there will always be deficits on paper. Um, when the mayor first took office, uh, we had no idea we were walking into an $11 million deficit, and that there were going to be deficits far into the future. 5 million, 7 million, 11, 13 million, 17 million, 23 million. Um, but those are on paper. That's, that's if you do nothing. Those projections are really important to have because it gives you a sense of, "All right, we need to make adjustments here, this is what we're facing." And that's what we've done every year. And so this second, um, five-year financial management plan will really help. Um, one of the recommendations that came out of the last plan was to do that, um, prepayment of the water lease. Uh, we thought that that would get us, for those of you who are here will remember, we thought that was going to get us a couple of years of not having to raise taxes. And so far, it's been six. We've only used 8.8 million of, um, that funding for, um, this, to, to cover the gap in the, in the structural deficit. Uh, 78 million of it went to paying down debt. So, um, we still have 6.5 million left, which, you know, again, it's, it's down there, it's going, it's going down, but it's gotten us a lot farther than we initially thought it was, it would. So, um, I think that's all I have for right now, unless anybody has any questions for me.
Thank you very much.
Did you time me?
You took, uh, the gold medal.[1693.01][1693.01](laughing) Kathy got the silver medal.[1696.01][1696.01](laughing)
Thank you. Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
If I may, I forgot two things. One of them, uh, that meeting I requested, could we add either Mark Dombrowski or Mr. Nacastro to that meeting? I heard a rumor that they've got $100 million that they're going to be using for different things. I'm not sure what those different things are, but if we can get some of them, Row, we're going to do that. Okay? And my final thing, and I don't know how I forgot this, uh, my employee of the week, you got to give a kudos to Mr. Higgins in code enforcement, uh, for the hard work that he did, uh, procuring the grants and monies with Mr. Harkins for our K-9 group. Uh, a lot of times, he likes to stay in the background, but he deserves applause because he does a lot of hard work that people don't notice. So Higgins, way to go. Thank you much.
Okay, thank you, Ed. You got the bronze medal.[1766.53][1766.53](laughing) With, council, have anything else? You're in none, this meeting's adjourned.
City Council adjourns at 11:06 a.m. Members Witherspoon, Brzezinski, Flores, Nelson, Schaff.